Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, April 8th, 2019 at 7:01 PM. Tonight, we're having committee meetings. We have a Committee of the Whole followed by Transportation and Finance. So, we'll start off with Committee of the Whole, and I believe Councilmember Kotzis has a statement to make.
Yes, President Nysley, thank you. And, you know, looking at the agenda, the Committee of the Whole, the only bullet point to discuss tonight is the Bailey's Trail, which is, just to provide some history, is something I've been involved with for over four years. I was invited into the conversation with Wayne National Forest on this project before I was even on council. And I was invited to be there because I'm a community volunteer, so I actually had decades of work prior to this, and that's what gained me that initial engagement. And we have come so far in four years with this project, and it's not because of me, but because of so many people that have put time, energy, and effort. And so, since I have the floor right now, I do want to thank everybody that has been working on this project and has put in the time and energy to bring it to where it is. And it's to a point where we never anticipated it to be. And the conversations that are coming forward now with council, I believe that at this point that I need to recuse myself from the conversation. Earlier this week, or last week, when we found out that this conversation was going to happen, I called the Ohio Ethics Commission in Columbus and just had a, well, I had about a half-hour conversation with them, trying to explain what this was and where we were going. And really, to what it boils down to, I think the cleanest and clearest connection that we can make is that I am a property owner in the village, and so, but I believe that there are other factors that exclude me far beyond that. So, in order to continue to work on the project, I want to excuse myself from the conversation. Part of me feels like it's somewhat frustrating because I do have a lot of knowledge that I could provide council about this project, but I believe that there are many people here that can provide a lot of the same information, and I just want to withhold my vote from this process. So, I'm going to exit the dais at this point. And I also wanted to make a point that the second, the Transportation Committee, I can't speak to that one either, so I could have just stayed home tonight, but I decided to come in for at least the very beginning. Thank you. Thank you.
You must really like being with your colleagues.
Yes.
And we're glad you're here. Anyway, thank you all for being here tonight. I want to also thank Jessica Branner, who has helped us with some of the documents that we'll be taking a look at tonight, and she is a prosecuting attorney in the Law Director's Office here with the City of Athens. And I also want to thank Dawn McCarthy with the Wayne National Forest for taking time to be here to answer any of our questions that we might have. And I think we also have Danny Twilley, if we would have any other questions. He's been very much involved with the project. I thought what I'd do tonight is give a little bit of background information and leading up to what will be the documents that council members have been provided, one of which is a proposal to authorize the mayor to enter into a Council of Governments agreement. This is an arrangement that's defined by the Ohio Revised Code and one in which the City of Athens has entered into before with our utility aggregations, the SOPEC and the NOPEC. Most notably for our region, also, another Council of Governments that serves as an example is the Buckeye Hills Regional Council. That's been around for 40 years now, and so, serves as an excellent model for us. So, by way of background information, in September of 2018, the mayor and I, as well as County Commissioner Lenny Eliason, some representatives from Ohio University, representatives from the city of Nelsonville, and also the villages of Chancy and Donville, were issued an invitation to attend a meeting at Wayne National Forest Headquarters, and this was to discuss Bailey's Trail. And by way of background information, very briefly, this Bailey's Trail system is comprised of, would be comprised of 88 miles of trails and involve over 9,200 acres, so quite a big project and spanning through parts of Athens County. The members attended that initial meeting in October, and you may recall that in November of 2018, Rural Action had a proposal submitted to the Appalachian Regional Commission for funding for this project, and council did issue a general letter of support for that particular proposal that went through. The first version of that, I don't believe, is approved. I think it's being reworked now with some recommendations. Then in February 2019, the Wayne National Forest hosted the Associate Chief Director of the USDA Forest Service to come to Athens, in large part to learn more about the Bailey's Trail system. And we also had an afternoon of roundtable conversations with people from the community, the university, the county attending that. And at this point, then, the project, as Councilmember Kotzis mentioned, four years in the planning, and I believe there are even preliminary plans that dated back longer than that, and the long-range plans for the Wayne National Forest, for this kind of trail system to be part of it. So, there is a project, and the, what it's been termed as is this Council of Governments would be a way for us to move forward with its, what's a combination of a conservation project, outdoor recreation, and also provides, as our tourism director has told us, Paige Lost has often mentioned, you know, the benefit of possibly an economic project, economic benefit to several of the communities where these trailheads are located. So, what we have now is an agreement, this is a draft, and in part, put together, and we thank Jessica Branner again for putting this together, an agreement for the establishment of what would be called an Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia Councils of Government. So, we do have a draft document saying that the parties would be the City of Athens, the county, the city of Nelsonville, the village of Chancy, Dover Township, Ohio, and Ohio University, and that they would be members of this agreement. And what's also helpful is that we have a Council of Governments chart of sorts that the members have been provided with, defining the different processes that are involved with this project. And it is complicated, there's been a lot of planning, several grants, and there is this need for a structure to help, to help, not control, but to regulate the funds that could potentially come in for this project. As I mentioned, some funds have already been here, the planning and environmental work, but now there would be additional funds that would be sought. And the total cost of the project is about $10 million. There has also been made mention of an opportunity that we have with the new market tax credits, and this would be, as I understand the mechanism, a bond that would be issued, and then, for the money for that, and that does not obligate though the city in any way. This would just be money that would be coming in to the project. So, at this point, I'd like to see if there are any preliminary questions from council members or comments, and then also provide the mayor an opportunity to talk about this as he has been present at some of the meetings, at all of the meetings. Any questions yet? Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, Chairman Nysley. I understand this is an incredibly potential endeavor for the City of Athens and for the other government agencies and for the area, and of course, it can bring in tourism dollars and development dollars, but I just wondered, you indicated that the City of Athens would not be actually financing any of the bonds, is that correct, or at least not signing off on it?
Not the new market tax credit bonds, as I understand. There would be eventually an ask of the city and county, and there has been discussion of possible four sources of revenue for the city and county cost-sharing share to use monies from the transient guest tax. And so, that has been the discussion of where the most relevant and applicable funds that the city, of city revenue sources, it's generated.
And do we know just offhand how much the city would be asked to contribute for those funds yet, or even any kind of idea?
Over the course of the project, it would be, over seven years, it would be a city and county share that I believe is one, it's been listed as either $1.2 or $1.4 million. The portions that they're talking about now would be the interest only if money was, if other monies were borrowed to help pay for the project. So, that's, for the first seven years, that's what would be, what would be due, is the interest payment only.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Patterson.
And then, interest, at this point, the interest, as we understand it, would be about $50,000, between $50,000 and $60,000 annually. That would, again, the only place that I can see this money coming from, remember McGee is from the bed tax, the transient guest tax, of which 50% of that 3%, that is the city's tax, goes into the general fund, the other 50% goes to the Convention and Visitors' Bureau. And it brings in, on average, about $440,000 total, and again, of which half of that $220,000, give or take, goes to the Convention and Visitors' Bureau, and the remainder goes into our general fund. But this is money that is, it comes in, I mean, this particular tax is for people who stay in the hotels in the City of Athens.
Thank you.
As well as the two, by the way, the two bed and breakfasts that we have in this, currently have in the City of Athens, that are also paying their transient guest tax.
That's the two legitimate bed and breakfasts we have. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Fall.
There's been several presentations about this program, this project. One, I, what is the power structure that will be in place? This is, if it's like NOPEC, then there are board members and such, so how are those going to be developed, and what sort of ultimate accountability is, will be for citizens? Also, is this, the new opportunity, new opportunity credits, those bonds, are those bonds the ones that are being marketed by the venture capitalist firm that first started talking about, you know, the impact funding that they wanted to do and such? Where is this, where are these bonds going to be marketed, and how does Quantified Ventures come into it at this point? Because the last time we talked about it, they were here doing the presentation, so I'm just wondering what their role is now.
Quantified Ventures' role, you know, again, their role is to simply work through the Pay for Success model. As I understand it, they jumped into this with the US Forest Service to help work through this process. In terms of the bonds themselves, the new market tax credits, I'm not sure if anybody has been identified to pay, you know, to be involved in that. I can certainly find out if there's any updates from Seth Brown. Seth Brown has been our contact all along with Quantified Ventures.
And that was, Quantified Ventures was the organization that mentioned the new market, or an affiliate of that?
Correct.
That mentioned the new market tax credits. Correct. And this is a Pay for Success model, so, you know, part of it is, is that there are people who are represented by Quantified Ventures who are saying, "We will find investors to pay for," who are interested in this investment, to pay for a portion of the project." So, it's called a, what's, it's called a Pay for Success model. As I understand-
Well, it's a Pay for Success model, though ultimately, investors are paid if it's successful. I mean, they're not guaranteed from certain things, and so, that model was being talked about, a model that is now being talked about is potentially paying with the transient guest tax. But we will not know if that transient guest tax increases because of the project, or increases because four more hotels are built in Athens because of, the parents' weekends are really super big. You know what I mean? So, there has to be, I think, a really defined what it is meaning to be Pay for Success, and that where that money comes out of in the various funding mechanisms and places. One point, it was discussed about, the parking revenue would be going off, and that parking revenue would be used as a Pay for Success, or the transient guest tax. So, I think that we have to be very careful because that is not a true Pay for Success if they are being paid automatically out of the transient guest tax. So, we need to look at those mechanisms to be able to pay those.
And I could be wrong, and now I'm understanding the program, but I think the transient guest tax is being used from the city and the county would be counted as what is our portion of the cost share of the project. So, other questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. I have actually a question for our acting City Law Director. Do you know whether it's possible for the city to be only responsible for a limited amount of money in this process, or are we signing on, if we do this, signing on for any larger amount, of being secondarily liable?
That's a great question. I think intentionally, the money piece has been very, just as far as who's going to be obligated for what, it's been talked in very loose terms right now, just because nothing's really been hashed out, nothing's really final yet, but the understanding is that the City of Athens is just a player with several other folks, including the county being a very large partner in this project. So, the understanding is that the city's not going to be left holding the bag. It's not this idea that, you know, we're either all in this together and we're all doing it, or nobody's doing it. It's not going to be a situation where the city's just obligated.
Other comments and questions? And I might say, Mayor Patterson, I'll defer to you, and then also see if anybody wants to make any comments from the audience also. Yes, Mayor Patterson.
I believe council has the documents associated with this, the, you know, the agreement, one document, which is the Agreement for the Establishment of the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachian Councils of Governments. I do want to point out, I was asking for some clarity on where you see, if you have it in front of you, the second whereas, I believe that York Township needs to be included in that because the, the area known as Donville, which doesn't have a government, and hasn't for quite some time, therefore isn't a political subdivision, but York Township is, so it would be adding York Township as one of the members for the Council of Governments. The reason I bring that up is because Donville will have a trailhead, and you just mentioned parking, that that would be one of the areas that does have parking that could be generating some revenue for the Pay for Success model, much as Chancy would, which does have a government, and Buckdole would also be a trailhead, and so, we just caught that earlier today, and we're talking this through, so.
And council members have received a copy of a draft ordinance, and it does, what it does is authorizes, Section 1 authorizes the mayor to execute a Council of Government agreements in substantially the same form as attached in Exhibit A, acknowledging that there may be some changes to that. The other item is, is that Section 2 says, you know, clarifies that the ordinance shall not financially obligate the City of Athens to contribute to the COG unless and until such financial contribution is approved by a separate ordinance. So, we're keeping that separate at this point. This is only for the authorization to enter into the Council of Governments, and that, yeah, hereby determines that all formal actions taken relative to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Athens City Council, so. Any other questions of other council members? Yes, Councilmember Grace.
I'm just wondering where the discussion is with the other communities and townships in terms of, are we at a point of supposing their intention or their desire to participate in this, just noticing that it says that you're not obligated to sign if the other ones don't? How, what is the feeling in other communities, and what discussions have taken place regarding that?
You know, the only one that I can speak to would be the county with Commissioner Lenny Eliason, and what he indicated is that their turnaround time is much more quick than city council, and so, they were, you know, wanting council to have this discussion tonight and have it moved through the process, and that they will likely bring it up soon as well. I don't have a time for it, but I haven't spoken with anybody in Chancy, nor have I spoken to anybody in Buckdole or York Township, so I can't give you any updates. I don't know if President Nysley has or not.
No, he hasn't either. Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
Tagging on to what Councilmember Grace is discussing there, if during these discussions some of the other proposed members choose not to join in the COG, how would that affect things overall? Would it have a major impact?
Well, when you look at the village of Chancy and Buckdole, and then the Donville area, you know, their, the revenue that they would generate at those trailheads with a parking fee, I believe the fee, if I'm not mistaken, was $5 per vehicle to park there. So, again, I think that their, their contribution to this is, at this point in time, would be scale-appropriate based upon their size and the revenue that they currently are generating within those areas.
Wouldn't they benefit, whether they joined or not, assuming this was successful overall?
Likely.
I think the benefit being long-term, and that it's a recreation plan for the region, and so that it could expand, and if somebody wanted to take advantage, or not take advantage, but in some ways, it would make sense to be part of the Council of Governments, because then that way, as the program expands, they'd be getting greater benefits, possibly.
Thank you.
Just, yes, one more. Just one other point. I've noticed that York Township is not listed, but there's nothing listed either for Buckdole. City of Nelsonville is listed, but-
And this is in the ordinance itself, or the Council of Government?
The- Section 2.
Yeah, Section 2.
Yeah.
They would need to be added as well.
They would be, yes.
And conversations have taken place with each of those entities.
Are there any other entities that, I'm sorry to step on your question there, but it just popped in my head, that aren't listed here that could potentially later wish to somehow become affiliated with this? Would they then be able to join in?
None that we have discussed beyond those that I have mentioned that aren't on here, and those who are on here. Just for clarification, at this point in time, with Nelsonville, as well as the City of Athens, with Nelsonville, at this point, there's no trailhead or connector, for that matter, from Nelsonville, too, but they are exploring some options.
Okay.
Likely to go from Nelsonville to the Donville trailhead, but Nelsonville is kind of in the same position as the City of Athens.
Councilmember Crowe.
Along that same line of questioning, I assume, I see Mary Nally from the Campus and Community Engagement Office at Ohio University is listed as the signee for the document, I assume. I know that there are members in the audience from Ohio University who have been very involved in this project. Has her office, has the university designated her as the person to be involved in this, as Ohio University's representative?
That's what I understand. That might be a good question to ask of Mr. Twilley, because he has more inside information on Ohio University's participation in the COG. Thank you.
Do you have an answer, Mr. Twilley, by any chance? Or if you could peek up to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Twilley.
We're still in those conversations in terms of what it would look like as the university, so I wouldn't say officially, but again, as we're starting to begin the conversation of what the COG will look like, is, that's part of it. But we're continuing that at the university to see what would make sense, considering her office's role. She's been part of the conversation, but I can't officially answer on behalf of the university, but know that those conversations are still kind of actively taking place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And Ms. McCarthy, did you have anything you would like to add to the conversation or the discussion? This is Dawn McCarthy from Wayne National Forest.
Hello, thank you. So, I know that the Forest Service is in support of the Council of Governments. We see that it is larger than just the Bailey's project. The $10 million that Council President Nysley mentioned is not just for the Bailey's, but it's for the extension, the bikeway extension into Chancy and some of the other community improvements we're looking at in Chancy. So, we're looking at the Council of Governments helping us create a vehicle to where the local governments can work together, not just on the Bailey's project, but across boundaries, potentially into Cell City Park and Stroud Run State Park. It's really, this is just, the Bailey's is just the catalyst to get this conversation going. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Any other comments from the audience? And is there any other information that we need to provide to you as council, to council members? Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
I just have one suggestion. The graphics app, they're on our hard drive, I think they should be posted on our website. Let the public see the, yes, that chart there.
That chart, okay.
And any other documents.
Okay. It does include a stakeholder list describing the federal representatives, federal agencies, state representatives, state agencies. You're right, it's a good list, and shows how many people are involved in the project.
Get that on our website and have a link to it, and everybody else in the audience can see what we're talking about.
Sure. Mayor Patterson.
I would just like to reconnect with Member Fall. I think one of your questions early on was, who was going to be seated at the table with the COG? So, Section 5, under the Representation of Members, lists-
Right.
-who those individuals would be.
But also, what type of accountability were this, because something that, Grace, start having all this public monies going places, we need to be able to have a chain of command and accountability for it, you know, because that, I think, is kind of lacking when somebody says, "Oh, what is it doing?" And you want to point to somebody, you know, well, this is where, you know, the questions need to be asked. Also, I think that if you go forward with this being a larger COG, just beyond Bailey's, I think that you're going to still have to at least consult with nonprofits, especially like Athens Conservancy, which has a fairly major stake in this area that has to do with conservation and recreation. So, that may be something that needs to be included if it is going to become a model for a larger interaction about trails and recreation.
Sure.
Good point. Thank you. Am I, am I, we obviously don't take a vote in committee, am I sensing that there is general support of moving the ordinance and the council agreements forward?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay.
Well- We'll do some editing of who would be members on this, and I take Member Fall's suggestion as a good suggestion to, to know that, that in the future, if the COG were to grow again, especially for outdoor recreation, whether it's our, our water trails, or potential climbing walls in some other municipality, i.e. Hockingport or something, you know, that that is taken into consideration as to who else should be at the table with that.
In some ways, this looks like a park district, with having a board of members that can dissolve it or expand it and those sort of things. So I would look also at, like, at those sort of models, too, because that's something in our, in our area that we don't have coordinated action on a lot of these issues.
Thank you. Thanks for all the comments and questions. Okay, we'll move on to the Transportation Committee, and Councilmember McGee.
Thank you.
And our other representative, Councilmember Crowell.
I'd be happy to allow the other council members to stay seated if they want. We're fine. I know we, we all need the exercise, but, that's true. As the vice chair of the Transportation Committee, this is a relative, a short kind of issue right now. The Office of Engineering and Public Works has requested city council to authorize the mayor to submit an application for transportation improvement district funds through ODOCs. And this would involve, my understanding is, several projects, but one anticipated project would be the Stimson Avenue project, possibly some other funding, which is why I believe Councilmember Kotzis removed himself from this discussion. As far as what we would be doing on the next council meeting, again, would just be approving the fact that the mayor would submit that application, so perhaps the administration could inform us if anything else needs to be discussed on that.
I don't believe anything else does, Member McGee. I think this is pretty straightforward. As we've talked about before, is that typically what we try to do as best we can is to put together a stack of different funding sources for large projects, and the Stimson Avenue one fits with this. The Transportation Improvement District, the intent behind the TID funding mechanism is it's looking at, as the name implies, economic development, and you have to have, within the application, you have to show that there are a number of businesses in that area, and we know there are a large number of businesses in that corridor, so that's certainly helpful, but you, you can literally, you have to have a radius of .5 miles and a radius of 1 mile is typically what we use, and we get that from the Department of Transportation, Ohio Department of Transportation. And as everyone knows, that when you look at, you know, if it's a .5 radius versus a 1 mile, it's still capturing everything in the uptown area, and it's, it's large. Not only does it look at the number of businesses that would benefit from this, this roadway improvement, but it also looks at the number of jobs, the actual employees, so it's significant.
Right. And I know you've, you've indicated that the city would perhaps benefit in some other ways through the laying of fiber optic cable.
Yes.
Future conduits and such, and so even though the project itself, at least the Stimson Avenue project itself, could possibly be somewhat expensive, in the long run, it does have some benefits, and I applaud the administration on any effort whatsoever to gather funds from outside sources. That's the kind of thing that the citizens want to hear, that we've actually received some money from the state instead of vice versa, so, thank you.
True, true.
And does, does anyone have any comments from the audience? Or let me first say, do, do any other council members have any, okay. Does anyone have any comments from the audience or questions from the audience? Okay. It would appear then that we will submit that at the next council meeting then, and thank you.
Great. Okay. Move on to Finance and Personnel Committee, Councilmember Reisner, Butler, Crowell, and Kotzis.
There's only one bullet point, appropriations transfers, but there's actually several parts to that. First part.